Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of April 4th, 2024. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Allegedly, to the flag of the United States of America. A true republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2024 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. In addition, complete application files or applications files have been available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspections in accordance with the public meeting notice. And with that, may I have a roll call of Planning Board members and board township, board and township professionals, please?
Vice Chair Pease and Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, and Mr. Vitale are absent. Mr. Van der Vliet?
Here.
Mr. Scoboe?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Deb?
Here.
Committeeman Lapone?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Coys?
Present.
Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everybody. First up, we have a few meeting minutes for consideration. First one, the June 22nd, 2023, meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Scoboe, Ms. Smith, yourself, Deputy Mayor Chicorelli, Committeeman Lapone.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Scoboe, am I in a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussions from the dais? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next meeting minutes of July 6th, 2023.
Same, same group.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hearing non-roll call, please.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, meeting minutes of July 13th, 2023. Members?
Ms. Smith, Committeeman Lapone, yourself.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hearing non-roll call, please.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. And finally, July 20th, 2023.
Ms. Smith, Deputy Mayor Chicorelli, Committeeman Lapone, and the chairman.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved. I said I'm in a motion.
I will second that.
All right.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. And next, we have a resolution for consideration, Comer Corp., File Number 23-PB-15-SPV. Mr. Bernstein?
Mr. Scoboe, Ms. Smith, Mr. Deb, Committee, Deputy Mayor Chicorelli, Committeeman Lapone, and the chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I'm going to give it to Mr. Deb for the motion, Mr. Scoboe for the second. Any comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Deb?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. We do not have any planning board business this evening, nor ordinances for considerations. I will now move to business from the floor for items that are not, or matters not on this evening's agenda. No takers. So, we will move on to this evening's applications. First up is Toll Brothers, Inc., RBG backslash enclave with file number 21-PB-10-S backslash MS backslash SP. Let's see. Applicant is seeking further retroactive extension beyond the prior extension date that was granted by this, by this board's resolution, which was memorialized on January 12th of this year, for a recording deadline for the minor subdivision and the extension until June 30th of this year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Richard Hoffel Law Firm, Abizgar Hoff, I'm here on behalf of the applicant Toll Brothers, Inc. As the board will recall, Toll is the contract purchaser of a portion of the Royce Brook Golf Course. The Royce Brook Golf Course is a subject to an approval that does two things. It provides for a subdivision of that golf course. Currently exists two lots there. The minor subdivision was approved by this board back in June of 2022, that takes those two lots and makes them three. One of those three lots is to be conveyed to Toll Brothers, upon which Toll is proposing to construct a single-family home community. That's the subject of a major subdivision approval that doesn't have anything to do with the minor subdivision. However, it is related to the minor subdivision in the sense that Toll is not going to take title to the property absent having all the approvals on the major. So we've sort of been tracking the minor subdivision along the same path as the major. There's no sense of recording it because Toll won't own it yet, so we've been holding it out. Unfortunately, the municipal land you saw only provides for 190 days for an applicant to record a minor subdivision. So, as I was here the last time, we sought an extension. The board was kind enough to grant an extension through February 28th of 2024, subject to us providing an update, which we did at the end of the year. And unfortunately, we have some outside agency approvals that still remain. The RCC is still outstanding, although we anticipate being able to achieve that hopefully this month, but I said that last time I was here, too. They seem to be relatively, we'll leave it at that they've requested additional information on a number of occasions. We continue to provide it. We hope we're done. We think we're done, but one never knows until you actually are done. So that one remains outstanding. So, there are a couple others, but that's really the one that's caused the delay. So we're seeking to extend the minor subdivision further, again, to dovetail it to the major. In my letter, I've indicated that we would like a request through June 30, 2024. If the board were so inclined, I'd like to extend that to July the 9th, simply because we've targeted that as a potential closing on the property. So what we think will happen is, a couple of days prior to that, we'll have a minor subdivision recorded. Toll will then take title to the portion that it's going to retain, and then the provisions of the major subdivision will take over per purposes of the construction. So July 9th would be ideal for us, because we think that better dovetails with the timing leading into that. I've already prepared the, from a minor subdivision standpoint, I don't think there's really anything outstanding. We're going to forward the legal descriptions to Mr. Coys's office, to the board's engineers for their review. I'll provide Mr. Bernstein with a copy of the minor subdivision deed. So we anticipate having it all lined up, ready to go, but from a practicality standpoint, we'll record it as we get closer to the physical closing, because it only makes sense for really Toll to own that parcel, not the current owner. And it doesn't make sense for Royce Brook to do a minor subdivision, to take title to three properties and hold it. So, again, we're looking at it from a practicality standpoint, but from, we believe, a legal standpoint, we don't see anything that stands in the way of the minor being perfected and recorded. So, we're asking with the board's indulgence if they would grant us an approval to July 9th, 2024, and hopefully I won't have to come back. At least on the minor.
Mr. Coys? Any comments?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mayhew?
No comments.
Mr. Bernstein, any guidance?
I would suggest if the board is inclined to grant this extinction, that we get an update or a potential appearance from Mr. Hoff on the 13th of June, which is the last board meeting the board will have in June, so that we don't end up having him come here again in July. If he needs another extension, let him come in June.
That's certainly agreeable, sure.
Okay.
So basically, Mr. Chairman, it's a motion to extend the filing of the minor subdivision application as occurred previously on this site up to and through July 9th, 2024, with Mr. Hoff's appearance, that may or may not require notice depending upon the status of the application for the June 13th Planning Board meeting.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the dais? Or a motion?
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, to avoid any concerns, because some members of the board were on the board when the original application somewhere here for the extension. I therefore recommend that the three individuals who fit the consistency pattern are yourself, the deputy mayor, and the committee man.
This means we've been here for a while, so.
Notice I was on, I was always on all the notes in the minutes. I was the one guy that was over here, but I'll make that motion, and I hope that we don't have to see you, Mr. Hoff. Thank you.
Okay, because it was in your hands. Okay, we don't have to open.
No.
Any comments, so? Okay.
It was a, it was a noticed meeting, so.
That is correct. You have to open it then.
Okay, so we will pause on taking a potential vote, and may have a motion to open the public.
So moved.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, if there's anyone from the public that would like to ask the applicant's attorney, any questions regarding this extension request?
Only.
Only? Though I said only, okay. Okay, so no takers, motion to close to public.
So moved.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a motion on, on the floor, so we will go to roll call, please.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Thank you, and I hope to not see everyone on June 13th.
We do enjoy your appearances, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So we are now moving to the, I think what everyone is here for. So, representation for the applicant and also objectors. You can choose your tables. So up next is Western, Weston Road LLC, File Number 22-PB-03-MSPV. Time of decision, April 30th of this year, Block 185, Lot 1. This application is being continued from our February 1st, 2024 meeting without further notice. And with that, just to go on the record, we're going to just put everyone up at the table, so Mr. O'Grady first.
Good evening, members of the board. Michael O'Grady, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
Good evening. Michael Sinkovich, on behalf of the Hearthstone at Hillsborough Homeowners Association.
And Jordan Ash, also on behalf of the, on behalf of the Hearthstone Hillsborough Homeowners Association.
Okay, welcome back, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, for purposes of the record, though I believe both Mr. Deb and Mr. Van der Vliet are going to remain on the dais, neither one of them has submitted the necessary paperwork to make them eligible to be part of the application. So the, we do have a corps. It is Mr. Scoboe, yourself, Ms. Smith, Committeeman Lapone, and Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Okay. Do they get to say, or no?
No. At this point, by recollection, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Sinkovich has a wit, it was witness. We were now in the objectors piece.
That's correct. We have Paul Gleitz, our professional planner, to continue his testimony.
Paul Gleitz, G-L-E-I-T-Z.
Good evening, Mr. Gleitz. Thank you for appearing again on behalf of the homeowners association. As the board may recall, we were part of the way through your testimony at the last hearing. You provided a lot of detailed information that touched on a number of different points. And to refresh the board's recollection, particularly since it was so late in the night during your testimony, I'd just like to briefly touch on a few points, and then we can continue your testimony and finish up today. So specifically, with regard to one of the first things you discussed, my recollection was you reviewed the use the applicant is relying on. Wasn't that correct?
Yes.
And could you please explain that?
Sure. Good evening, it's good to be back, and I'll just go over some, some highlights. So the applicant is relying on the warehouse shipping and receiving completely within an enclosed building, which is listed as a principal permitted use in the I-1 zone to support their application as permitted use. That ordinance section was amended in June of this, of last year, to delete the use from the list of permitted uses. Prior to ordinance 202308, the ordinance was last amended in 1982, about 42 years ago. And since that time, I made the point that the nature of warehouse development and commerce has fundamentally changed, and the fact that the warehouse shipping and receiving completely in an enclosed building is not defined in your land use ordinance, I felt that it was important for us to also consider the purpose of the zone. And the zone, that, that zone was created in 1982, and the nature of, you know, warehousing has changed so much since then. And since the warehouse, the term warehouse and shipping and receiving is undefined in the land use ordinance, I thought it was important that you look at the purpose of the zone and additional sources to determine what type of use was intended at that time for development in the zone. I then went on to list, per the LDO, the purpose of the I-1 and the I-2 light industrial districts is to create zoning districts recognizing the existing pattern of small industrial-oriented facilities and allowing the remaining vacant lots in the same areas to be developed with similar uses and providing areas of modest industrial operations. And then went through a very detailed review of all the other I-1 zones throughout the town and the uses that could be found, the types of buildings, the size of the structures. And I noted that all of, even a more detailed description of each property was in the appendix of my planning report as submitted. And I just reiterated that none of the lots in the.
Just gonna ask you just to go a little bit slower, because his keyboard is.
I'm seeing smoke rising, so. I just, the overall point was that none of the lots in the Western Road I-1 are developed as warehouses, shipping and receiving facilities, and that the size and scale of the proposed warehouse doesn't really comport with the notion of an existing pattern of small industrial-oriented facilities, allowing for the remaining vacant lots in the area to be developed with similar uses, and for providing areas of modest industrial operations. What we have is a structure in excess of 130,000 square feet with over 125,000 square feet of warehouse space, offices, 99 parking spaces, 20 loading spaces, et cetera, et cetera. So that was the point I was making in terms of the intent of the zone and how it's played out throughout the rest of the township.
Thank you. And I know after that, you then moved on and discussed, you provided a discussion on truck terminals and how that plays into this application. And again, you don't need to go through everything, but if you could just very briefly, you know.
Certainly. Just, the one definition in your land use ordinance that was closest to the application was a truck terminal, and that's an originating or terminating point for trucks, which may include servicing facilities for trucks and comfort facilities. The existence or proposed location of storage or warehousing of items transported by trucks shall not be deemed to change the character of the use, which meets the foregoing definition of truck terminal. And that's, that's important, because those types of facilities are specifically prohibited throughout the entire township in the land development ordinance. And I just went on to say how the testimony given by the applicant and the traffic engineer and the logistic experts all talked about the proposed use is the bulk goods being shipped from overseas to the Port of Elizabeth in these pre-pat containers. Those containers are then trucked to the site where they're unloaded and materials are stored. Then they're repackaged for delivery either to retailers or to end users, and they're put back on the containers that are then trucked by third-party carriers as discussed, like FedEx or DHL. And so, we have these trucks with containers from Port Elizabeth terminating at the facility, and trucks with deliveries to end users originating from the facility. And I think it's important to note, there's no construction or fabrication, combining or installation of any kinds with the materials or those products. They're brought in as, and shipped back out as, as they are. And we know there'll be comfort facilities for, for the truck drivers included, so I thought that was quite similar in many of its aspects to a truck terminal.
Thank you, thank you. And next, you went on and had a brief discussion on the recent State Planning Commission guidance document, and could you just briefly touch on that?
Yes, I noted that it was kind of unusual of the State Planning Commission to put out such a report, so they must have felt it was a pretty emergent and pretty important topic to, you know, publish such a report. And they note that large warehouses located near residential areas, over burning communities or other sensitive receptors expose people to air pollution, noise, traffic congestion, and other environmental impacts. And this intensity of the use is out of scale with, can, can have substantial detriment if it's out of scale with the road rate capacity and infrastructure. And additionally, they, so the State Planning Commission is recommending any board that's hearing these types of land use applications to hear a detailed analysis of traffic and road safety aspects should be required of the developer. And again, they should be, look at the proposed truck routes and see if they're going to impact downtown commercial retail centers, main streets, residential areas, and everything else. And so I just noted that from the testimony provided by the applicant, there was a lot of deferred answers. The use and operation of the facility was not fully described. And I also noted that the, it could be used for a number of different types of end users. And so the applicant really didn't provide the kind of testimony and analysis, especially under the traffic engineer's testimony, that the State Planning Commission is recommending for, for, for boards to require.
Thank you. Next, there was some testimony about a prior, prior approval concerning this property, I think was over 20 years ago, and could you just briefly touch on that as well?
Sure. The applicant's land use planners report from February of last year went through kind of a history of the, the, how the zoning in this area, how the Hearthstone at Hillsborough neighborhood was created, and what approvals were in place at the time, and to kind of make the point that everyone knew what was to be built on this site, and there shouldn't be any surprises coming out of this application. And I just wanted to note that the approval at the time was a nine-lot industrial subdivision, and the public offering statement of Hearthstone at Hillsborough states that the property in question has been approved for development as a light industrial park. That the nine-lot subdivision, as was initially, you know, imagined for the site, with a separate lot for stormwater management on the 18 acres that the lot comprises of, would have, you know, 1.5 to 2-acre lots, and you'd have buildings from 19,000 to 26,000 square feet based on the bulk requirements in, in those, those lot areas. And that, you know, what was anticipated then is not, and these nine separate smaller buildings would not have the same kind of impacts as you'd find from this 130,000 square facility, with the truck traffic, the noise, everything else. And so it's not a light industrial development, but it's a large warehouse and distribution facility. So I want to make sure the board, from, from my perspective, these are two different types of, you know, applications, two type, two different types of approvals.
And finally, just for our recap, you had an opportunity to review, and you already mentioned it, ordinance 2023-8. And of course, we've discussed at length at the last hearing, and we don't need to go through the whole legal analysis, but I just wanted to know what your, your conclusion with regard to that ordinance was.
Well, it was just interesting that, you know, the last time this zone was looked at in 1982, they came up with an undefined use of warehouse that was designed to kind of match the type of development you saw throughout the zone and allow for, you know, a limited development of the vacant parcels. And the next time you looked at it, everyone said, well, warehousing is not appropriate for the zone. And the, the ordinance noted that many of the proposed warehouses before the board were located in close proximity to sensitive land uses and residential zones. They produced the same kind of negative impacts that the State Planning Commission listed in terms of noise, traffic, truck traffic and air pollution, and that the township had the right to protect the public health, safety, and welfare to, by aligning with the master plan and prohibiting these uses in a number of the zones. I also noted that this board found that that ordinance was consistent with the master plan and recommended adoption of that ordinance through their review process.
I have an objection, Mr. Bernstein, and I'll explain it more in my cross-examination, but I believe it's inappropriate of this board to consider the ordinance that's ineffective for this application. Time of application rule applies, and for this, for the planner to testify that just because a subsequent ordinance barred a use, it's not relevant to this application.
And if I may, Mr. Bernstein, of course, our position is that it is relevant to this application. We've put our legal positions forward, and Mr. Gleitz is a professional planner, is in the business of reviewing ordinance and things of that nature, and I think it's appropriate that he at least be able to give his opinion.
I'll advise the board accordingly. The ordinance was adopted by the Township Committee last year. It postdates the submission of the application, and it is currently being litigated by several other parties other than Mr. O'Grady's current, present, well, not current, present client regarding same. Mr. Gleitz can give testimony, but the board needs to be aware of the fact that the testimony that he gives in relation to the application of the 2023 Township Committee Ordinance on Warehousing does not in and of itself have a binding impact upon this board in ultimately deciding whether or not to grant this application or not. That does not mean I have rendered a decision on whether or not the applicability, and before Mr. Sinkovich chimes in, that is not meaning that we have made an ultimate final decision on the application of the time of decision rules that relates to this ordinance. I remind the board that there were legal arguments made that because of the health, safety, and welfare piece of it, that it is exempt from the time of application rule and therefore more applied to the time of decision rule. That is not a decision that needs to be addressed by this board at this time.
I just want to note for the record that it may present a prejudicial effect on the board. Board is considering zoning standards that are not applicable to this application.
The board is considering the application before and the zoning standards that existed. If Mr. Sinkovich is ultimately successful in convincing me, and me convincing the board, that it is time of decision versus time of application, Mr. Gleitz's testimony related to the impact of that ordinance may have an impact at that point per purposes of this record at this time. The issue before the board is the application that was before you as submitted by the applicant at the time it was submitted and not any subsequent ordinances. So I'm not sure it necessarily is prejudicial to the board, Mr. O'Grady.
You can continue, Mr. Gleitz.
Thank you. Even if the board doesn't consider my testimony about this particular issue to be the final word on the applicability of, and whether this board is jurisdiction, I think from a planning perspective, and I think from, in light of additional testimony provided by the applicant, the applicant's professionals, that I think it's, it's illustrative, it's interesting, it's noteworthy that both the Township Committee and this body have made certain findings about this use in this zone through the adoption of the ordinance. And I believe that both the, in the 40 years since it was last considered, it was considered at one point to be an appropriate use to, as infill in a small-scale type of development. And then the next time it was looked at, it was decided that, given the change in the use of warehousing over time in those 40 years, it was not, not appropriate. So that is my, my planning testimony. So that is my my planning testimony about an analysis that's been done in general about the appropriateness of of the use in the zone.
Mr. Chairman, just for the board's certification, Mr. Gleets's testimony related to the impact of the ordinance in and of itself is not binding on this board. His discussions relative to what came before the ordinance and subsequent to the last change in the zone does have appropriate impact as it relates to the overall application, as it does any other professionals' testimony.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you to the board for bearing with us as we did a little brief highlight of our last testimony. So I think with that, Mr. Gleets, why don't we pick up where we left off? The last time, I believe you were going to start making some planning comments on the the site plan and then the variance variants and waivers requested.
I was. I just wanted to make two more points about my prior testimony, if I can.
Oh, absolutely, please.
Just real quickly, I reviewed the traffic testimony and the engineer and the environmental reports, and I just wanted to when the one thing I think is very important is I continue my testimony and for the board to consider here in relation to the advice given by the State Planning Commission on these types of applications, is that the traffic engineer testified that there was no other analysis done on the surrounding road network because the proposed warehouse was deemed a permitted use and that the council had kind of set the blueprint for development development in the town, and the developer was following that blueprint, so no further analysis was was necessary. And I want to note under in terms of the master plan, I went through a whole list of both the 2018 master plan and reexamination report and subsequent documents to that. And I just noted that there were several instances where the master plan was inconsistent with some of the elements of the proposal in terms of land use management, media design, transportation, and economic development, and some of the 2018 recommendations moving forward. And so that I think that my conclusions from reviewing the master plan documents in the 20, both the original and the and the subsequent reexaminations report, was that the project location is not suitable in terms of transportation and infrastructure because of the nature of Western Road. It doesn't preserve peace and solitude of residents and is incompatible with adjacent residential development, and will have significant impacts on the adjacent Hearthstone at Hillsborough neighborhood. The development will negatively impact air quality and hydrology of the affected wetlands. And the it's the projects is not consistent with available infrastructure and support services, especially Western Road. So that was kind of the quick review of the master plan impacts and the some of the prior testimony I wanted to to provide.
Excellent, thank you.
Moving forward with new testimony, I will continue to speak slowly and deliberately. So I think the boards, there's some site plan considerations related to the use, I think the board should consider as well, based on the site plans, last revised date, June 16th of 2023. The site appears to provide significantly more parking than is required by your ordinance, including 20 loading spaces where five are required, which is about four times the required loading spaces, and 99 passenger vehicle parking spaces where 43 are required, representing 2.3 times the required parking. So, you know, the board may want to consider why the site is so quote unquote overparked based on the intended use of miracle brands. The applicant has testified to a varying number of employees from 45 to 55, some in the office, some in the warehouse. Subsequent testimony also indicated that most, if not all, the office staff will remain as remote workers. And so the applicant in the logistic operations testimony spoke of current and future conditions with an unknown number of employees. Traffic testimony was inconclusive about the number of trucks trips, truck trips to be generated. Some some of the testimony indicated 10 inbound truck trips and 10 outbound truck trips, but if that number represents 10 inbound and 10 outbound container movements, then that number raises to 20 truck trips for the inbound and the outbound, since the port delivery is one company with an inbound and outbound trip for each container, and the subsequent customer retailer delivery is another company with another inbound and outbound trip. So that totals 40 trips being generated on a daily basis. And then there was also some indication about a third company being involved with onsite trailer movement that could generate even more inbound and outbound trips. It was unclear whether how they were going to move containers, and there were several options presented, but none of them were definitively listed as the the one option they were going to stick with for operating the site. Seasonal variations in future use made a true estimate of the truck trips very difficult to determine, so designing and building a park, a site with an excess of parking spaces and loading spaces really can be suitable for operations two to four times more intense in terms of truck traffic and passenger car traffic than the original zoning really contemplated for 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 this type of site.
I'm going to just note my objection for the record. My objection is that's speculative, and you're not a traffic engineer, so you really can't testify as to potential future trip generation.
I'm merely commenting as a planner on the testimony given by, I'm not a traffic engineer at all, so I'm just considering the land use impacts of the testimony as provided. And again, designing and building 130,000 square foot warehouse complex can allow for the building to be converted to other types of warehousing, such as fulfillment centers and last mile fulfillment centers. And since this is a planning board application, with a use simply designated as warehousing, shipping, and receiving completely within enclosed building, the applicant could change their operational model, they could lease space to another operator, or find that they no longer need the facility and sell the warehouse complex to another user, that could change the nature of the use and create even greater impacts on the surrounding community. So the board really should consider how such a conversion would comport with the intent of the 1982 zoning. Also, the the building height at 38.5 feet could also accommodate conversions to other types of warehousing. And again, that could change the truck generation. And again, stormwater management is beyond the scope of my report and will be addressed by a separate witness on behalf of Hearthstone. But from a planning perspective, I think the stormwater management system as proposed, given the buffering requirement and the proximity of Western Road frontage to Hearthstone at Hillsborough, the wet pond was to from may not provide the same kind of buffer as anticipated in the ordinance in terms of buffering this use from the adjacent residential development. So the landscaping as proposed, the design of the wet pond, and the size of the scale of the proposed warehouse, including the need for the height variance and the actual apparent height from Western Road, given the site grading as well. You know, the 20-foot buffer really is not adequate as as proposed by the applicant to the development across the Western Road. The board planner and the board engineer have also commented on similar issues, including the buffering, tree retention, and changes in the hydrology on the site to the detriment of the freshwater wetlands on the site. So given the mass of the proposed building, that requires the height variance, the landscaping as proposed may not be the best option to provide the required buffering. I'd also like to give my opinion on the the bulk variance testimony that was provided. So as this, you know, the bulk variance is the C variance is required for the building height of 38.4 feet with 35 feet permitted. And I believe since the vacant, this is a vacant lot being developed for the first time, the applicant should be able to create a building conforming to the zone requirements. There are no exceptional conditions on the site that create the need for the height variance under the C1 standard. The site grading and location of the wetlands on the site still provide ample opportunity for the development of a conforming structure. Now, under the C2 variances, which I believe the which was what the testimony provided in the report provided by the applicant's planner, there's five elements of the C2. The number one, the application relates to a specific piece of property. Number two, that the purposes of the municipal land use law should be advanced or would be advanced by deviation from the zoning ordinance requirement. The benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment, and the granting of the variance will not negatively impact the zone plan and the general welfare. So the applicant's planner testified that the application advances five purposes of zoning from the municipal land use law. And I would argue that the applicant, that this application does not advance any of those purposes, as testified. So the first purpose was Purpose A, which is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And I believe this is met in the first case because of the specific findings of the governing body and this board in terms of this use under the ordinance from 2023.
No, my objection.
And then which they found did not promote the public health, safety, and welfare. There was no testimony in how the proposal or the proposed height of the building advances the public good or the general welfare. This is a proposal for a private commercial development that benefits the applicant and not the community. This is not an inherently beneficial type of use. This is not a community type use. This is private development, which is perfectly reasonable, but it doesn't really promote Purpose A, I believe, of the municipal land use law. The second purpose, which is Purpose C, and was mislabeled as B in the report, is to provide adequate light air and open space. And I don't believe this is met because this purpose applies really to the massing and scaling of development that can directly impact adjacent properties. This purpose is really drafted to make sure we weren't creating blighting, light conditions, overcrowding, and having impacts on adjacent properties where you couldn't get adequate air, adequate light for by because your neighbors had overdeveloped their property. And so the provision of adequate setbacks and open areas necessary for regulatory compliance does not mean that the development advances the purposes of zoning. The applicant requires a height variance, and site grading creates additional visual impact along Western Road. So and again, meeting minimum NJDEP requirements does not actively promote, I believe, Purpose C. These are baseline requirements that have to be met. It's not further advancing adequate air, light, and open space. Purpose G is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of ag, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses, and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. I don't believe that this proposal meets that standard because this is not an appropriate location for the use based on a number of reasons I've already described in my testimony, the proximity of the adjacent residential development, noise and air quality impacts, the insufficiency of Western Road, the local traffic impacts generated by the proposal, and the the zoning district in which it is is it's located. So again, you know, a lot of my testimony was based on the fact that we don't believe this is this is an appropriate location for development of this size, so I don't think it meets Purpose G. Moving on to I, which is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design. I don't believe that statement is met because the scale and the size of the building as it relates to the surrounding uses, especially Hearthstone at Hillsborough. The proposed building is large, imposing rectangle, with some minor facade elements near the building entrance. The remainder of the structure is long, unbroken facade with a row of loading docks. The site includes loading areas, detention basins, and a field of parking. Nothing about the proposal represents creative development techniques or good civic design. It's your basic warehouse layout on the site. Purpose J talks about the promotion of conservation of historic sites and districts, open space, energy resources, and valuable natural resources in the state, and to prevent urban sprawl and degradation of the environment through improper use of land. I don't believe this is met because, again, just meeting minimum NJDEP requirements does not actively promote the conservation of valuable natural resources. It just kind of limits the amount of damage you can do to the natural resources on the site. The board engineer has expressed concerns that the stormwater management plan is directing stormwater from one drainage area into another to the detriment of the onsite wetlands. Current proposal is a threat to the long-term viability of those protected wetlands if the engineer's hypothesis is correct. This is a green land building project with a total area of disturbance of more than 11 acres with eight and a half acres of wood and vegetation to be removed. The proposed access road will impact wetlands and transition areas requiring NJDEP wetlands permits. And again, the project is not a great field or a brownfield redevelopment project designed to prevent urban sprawl, it's a greenfield development project. So the entire project, based on my analysis, is a is a substantial detriment to the public good. There's no determinable benefits to the deviation, and the granting of the variance will create an even larger structure that does not provide areas for modest industrial operation. Under the C2 standard, the applicant's justification is that the height requested is standard in the industry and required by the tenant. Given the inconsistencies in the prior testimony as to the operations on the site, it's unclear what the needs of the proposed or future tenants will be. The applicant's planner also stated that building height variance is a function of a quirk in the calculation of building height in the land development ordinance and is only located along around the loading docks where the base floor elevation meets the surrounding grading, whereas we concur with the board planner and board engineer that the site grading around the building creates a height difference of 15 feet from the center of Western Road closest to the building at 62 feet and a base floor elevation of 77 feet along the building frontage, and when the building height of over 38 feet creates a top of building along Western Road frontage of about 53 feet, having a much greater impact than the 3.84 feet at the rear of the building.
No, my objection for the record, I believe that's mischaracterizing the testimony of the board's professionals.
You can address that on cross examination.
The ordinance tract in 1982 designated that a three and a half story structure would be appropriate for the site. If the applicant needs the site to create a usable building on the site, it's probable that this type of scale development was not anticipated by the zoning in 1982. The zoning for the site is clear that a warehouse of this size, this height, and the amount of parking, the number of loading docks is a use of structure more intense than what was anticipated by the 1982 zoning.
So was it your testimony, did did the applicant meet the criteria for the C variance?
I don't believe the applicant, you know, met the burden necessary for the granting of the C2 variance for the height.
Thank you. And now, there's some design waivers, I believe, that were requested by the applicant as well?
Correct.
Could you comment on those, please?
Sure. And I think we'll just NJSA 40:55D-51 A and B spells out what's necessary for a board to grant design waivers. And that is if literal enforcement of one or more provisions of the ordinance is A, impracticable, or will exact due hardship, and B, because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question. So design waivers aren't shouldn't be handed out because they quote unquote make sense, or they're not going to have any really such significant impact. The applicant has to prove that it's not impractical, but impracticable, meaning that it's nearly impossible to meet the design standards as stated. And it has to be based on some peculiar conditions of the land that makes it a hardship, a true hardship to meet the standards as written. So there's a number of design waivers sought for the application. The applicant cannot provide adequate buffering to the loading dock spaces, creating a buffer of 16 feet where 30 feet is required. Again, this is a vacant lot being developed for the first time, the applicant should be able to create loading dock configuration that conforms to the ordinance, and there's no exceptional conditions on the site that were listed that prevent the adequate buffering. As to the waiver for parking space size, the applicant's proposing undersized parking spaces of 180 square feet, 10 by 18, where 200 square feet is required, 10 by 20. I believe the site is substantially overparked, as I stated earlier, in terms of the ordinance requirements. And so the applicant, you know, can consider reducing the total number of parking spaces to provide adequate parking stall size. Additionally, for the US EPA 2022 Automotive Trends Report, the overall new vehicle market continues to move away from the sedan wagon vehicle type towards accommodation of trucks, SUVs, pickups, and car SUVs. In model year 2021, sedans and wagons fell to 26% of the market, well below the 50% market share they held. market share they held as recently as model year 2013, and far below the 80% market share they held in 1975. Conversely, truck SUVs reached a record high of 45% of the market in model year 2021, and pickups increased to 16% of the market share. So this trend in larger vehicles continues, and the 20-foot, the full 200 square foot, 20 by 10-foot parking spaces should be provided on the site. Now, the applicant's planner referred to the Residential Site Improvement Standards, also short, RISAS, when justifying requested design waivers for parking space size and for two-way drive aisle width, saying the composed conditions would meet the RISAS standards. But those standards do not apply to this application, as the name clearly indicates. Therefore, residential site improvements, not for commercial site design requirements. Given the landscaping plans proposed, the design of the wet pond, the size and scale of the proposed warehouse, including the height variance, the type of stormer detention feature does not provide the type of 20-foot buffer that that's required when located adjacent to a residential zone boundary. So again, there really is no need to not provide the adequate buffering in the area, as I stated earlier. So in conclusion, I'll just hit my last page of bullets here. The term warehouse is undefined in the Township Land Development Ordinance, so I believe the board should look to the purposes of the zone and additional sources to determine what type of use was intended for the zone. The proposed warehouse distribution facility that property in question is not consistent with the prevailing land use character of the area. Considering the size and scope of the application, along with the applicable definition set forth in the LDO, the proposed use is not what was envisioned in 1982, when the ordinance was drafted to permit warehousing, shipping, and receiving within an enclosed building. In fact, the proposed use is more akin to a truck terminal and other uses specifically prohibited in the land development ordinance. The State Planning Commission Guidance Document on Warehousing in New Jersey clearly highlights two issues the local board should consider in the review of warehouse distribution facility development applications: traffic impacts and air pollution and environmental impacts. The applicant has not provided adequate or detailed information about these app, these impacts, and the board should consider the absence of the information when evaluating the proposal. Again, the governing body and the board have determined that warehousing facilities produce negative impacts to the public, including noise, traffic, and air pollution, and that removing these type of uses from the zone is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and preserve the natural landscape of the community, which aligns with multiple goals of the master plan. Again, the governing body made the determination by removing the use from the I-1 zone. The board went along with that determination in your consistency review of the ordinance. The traffic impact analysis is only concerned with two hours of the day. The residents in the area are concerned with 24 hours in the day. Letting the traffic impact analysis to the level of service impacts on the surrounding new road networks during the morning and evening peak hours does not provide a full analysis of the potential impacts of the proposal on the surrounding area. The environmental impact statement did not fully address the negative health and safety impacts of increased truck traffic, idling trucks onsite, or other permissions from the proposed facility in the surrounding area. I believe the proposal is inconsistent with a number of goals and objectives of the master plan and the circulation plan element of the master plan. I believe the testimony for the height variance and the waivers failed to satisfy the requisite criteria that the application will impair the zone plan and zoning ordinance and result in substantial impact on the public good, and for these reasons, the application should be denied.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Comments, Mr. Coice?
I don't have, I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
May you, I was just throw it to you. Questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gleets, you talked about the ordinance, 47 years old, and how warehousing use or the assumption of where to, what a warehouse is, has changed over that time, and that possibly it wasn't intended for the use that it, that warehousing has morphed into. Could you be a little bit more specific as to what has changed, in your opinion, over those 40 years? Could it be the traffic associated with warehouses, or the hours of operation, or the building block size? In your opinion, could you help the board better understand what might have changed in 40 years?
Well, I think when the ordinance was drafted in, in the early 80s, warehousing was typically associated with either onsite production or smaller scale distribution to wholesalers. And since that time, both mail order, and then after that, the internet, and now Amazon and everything else has, and you see it driving around the state, you see it along the interstate, you see it along Turnpike, all of those, over time, those types of warehouses have gone from smaller facilities in a smaller area to much larger facilities serving the global commerce. COVID exacerbated that trend even further, so much more moved into direct delivery to the consumer. So I think we've seen, you know, Port of Newark is now the busiest port in the country. It's eclipsed Long Beach for the first time, I think, last year. So the, you know, the, the, the scale of, of this global commerce and the expectations of the consumer of next day, same day, two-day delivery has required a complete change in warehousing, distributing, logistics, you know, the, and the, the whole Turnpike corridor, everything else in New Jersey has seen a huge explosion, and all the other connecting roads in other areas have seen a much, much larger number and larger sizes. And so when you do that, it just increases the activity and increases the type of traffic to those facilities.
Would you say, in your opinion, as a planner, that the use proposed does not meet the intent of the township's ordinance envisioned 40 years ago?
Yes, I think when you look at the specific language of the purpose of the, of the, of the zone, you know, and I went over this a couple of times, but you know, it's, it's pretty clear that the I-1 and I-2 light industrial districts to create, is to create zoning districts, recognizing the existing pattern of small industrial oriented facilities, allowing remaining vacant lots in the same areas to be developed with similar uses and providing areas of modest industrial operations. And I talked about, you know, the Camplain Road I-zone, as I called it, that the largest I-1 zone, that's principally located north of Camplain Road, has 54 lots. And then if you go through the review of those, a lot of those developments are, there's only two large buildings with, you know, one is, the Valley Park Business Park is combined of 79,000 square feet. Dorelco Business Park has three buildings with a combined size of 40,000 square feet. Permidore Industries is 50,000 square feet. That is kind of the largest scale, I think, that was anticipated by the framers of the zoning. And then when you look at the 2018 Master Plan Reexamination Report, they talk about there are five light industrial zones, I-1, I-2, I-3, LI, and T ECD, and one general industrial zone, GI. A cursory review of the zones indicates minimal substantive differences that could likely be consolidated into three zones in the lens of light, general, and then commercial industrial. So I think even then, the, even as late as 2018, they kind of recognized that the LI and the else, and the LI1, the L1 and the L2, the I-1 and the I-2 really are these smaller type of zones with smaller type of development, these 15, 20, 30, 40,000 square foot type facilities, and not these larger 130,000 or larger.
As a planner, do you have an opinion on a generally appropriate warehouses of this size, location, and relationship to major highways such as state highways? Is there generally a good planning practice that would position this type of warehouse in a certain distance from a state highway?
No, I think you want them as close to state and federal highways. You want them situated close to major interchanges. You want them situated close to larger capacity highways and roadways so that there's limited interaction between the truck traffic and local traffic. So you want to prevent these trucks that are going to these facilities from having to drive through neighborhoods, from having to drive through residential zones, from having to drive through small-scale commercial areas. And so I think the two routes to the site really have, go through these, these land uses that really aren't, are appropriate. You want to see, that's why you see such strong development on, you know, at 8A, you know, that those type of things on Route 130, on other kinds of locations that can get them into the state highway system and then into the interstate system as quickly as possible.
So in, in your opinion, based on the fact that this is proposed on a local road some distance from a state highway, this is an example of poor planning?
I think, yeah, so it's one of the, one of the least desirable locations for a facility this size, because you have to go, either where you're going to go through either residential zoning and past schools, or into the heart of a small downtown to get to the interstate
Are you aware of, you, you mentioned the truck traffic on Western Road. Are you aware, it sounds like you are, that if a truck headed east from this proposed location, it would be heading into Manville Borough? Is that correct?
Yes.
And I believe that road name changes to Kennedy Boulevard when it enters Manville Borough. Is that correct?
Let me just, uh. Yeah. My review was that travel to and from the west would enter Manville to Kennedy Boulevard, and would then require a difficult turn on the South Main Street to access.
I'd like to make an objection for planner's characterization of a difficult left turn. It's unsupported by the record.
It's a right turn. It's a hard, it's a hard right turn. I had a hard time making it.
He's not a traffic engineer. He, he doesn't have turning radio.
He's not.
She had to make a right turn on the South Main Street to access the Manville Causeway to Western Canal Road, then that gets to Interstate 287.
Are, are you aware that Manville has proposed to the DOT a truck route plan for the borough?
I am not aware of that, no.
So you may not be aware, then, that the truck route plan that Manville has presented to the DOT labels Kennedy Boulevard as a non-truck route?
I'm not aware of that particular document or that report.
I note my objection, that it's not, that's not a fact on the record.
Witnesses testify that he's unaware of the situation, so for the purposes of the record, it is.
But I think what's noticeable, what's notable about that, that route is that it goes through the, the specific types of land uses the State Planning Commission recommends against: downtown commercial retail centers, Main Street, residential area, school zones, parks, daycare centers, over burning communities, and other sensitive receptors. When you drive that, you have high-density residential, you have very small-scale commercial, and that leads you directly into this, in, you know, in, into the downtown commercial
Mr. Gleets, you, you were testifying about the height of the building, the variance required. And I think in some of your testimony, you were talking about the height of the building in relationship to Western Road. And it looked like you were adding several feet to the height. Maybe you could explain a little bit more about why there's an impression that the building is higher from Western Road?
Yes, when, when you look at the elevation of Western Road closest to the building, that's at a great, you know, the contour lines marked that has 62 feet. And then the base floor elevation is 77 feet. So that's a 15-foot difference between the kind of center of Western Road till you get to the base of the building, and then you're adding the 38.4 feet on top of that. So it seems even higher than, from the center of Western Road, looking to the top of that building, it looks even higher than the 38 feet because you have that 15-foot of grade
Are you aware that some of that grade change is achieved by the site plan utilizing retaining walls in front of the building?
Yeah, there's at least one or two of them, I think, between the Western rail frontage and the, the base of the building.
Are you aware one of the retaining walls is approximately six feet or so off the face of the building?
Without looking at the site plans, that sounds correct.
In your opinion, as a planner, when a retaining wall is so close to the foundation of the building, at what point does that wall begin to appear to function as part of the building elevation?
I am not an engineer, I'm not an architect, but I think from the planning perspective, I'm only going to think, my only testimony would be in terms of visual impact. So structurally, I don't have an opinion. Architecturally, I don't have an opinion. But in terms of the visual impact, you're going to have, it could look like, you know, six to eight feet of, you know, stone course at the bottom, and then the continuing of the building above. It all depends on how grown in the landscaping is and how mature that landscaping can be. Does that create a real effective break between those two elevations? But it's still going to look like, you know, built vertical face and then another vertical face. And visually, it's, they're, they're going to contribute to each other.
So would you say, in your opinion, at some point, when a retaining wall is so close to the actual building, it essentially, from a visual and almost from a zoning standpoint, it's adding to the elevation of the building at some point?
I'm going to say it's adding to the visual impact of the building, you know, the, and the, the perception of that facade. You know, a lot of times what we do is, you know, the, you know, building heights and their impact on the surrounding properties are offset by a couple different ways: buffering, distance, you know, you have the angle of inclusion to see, you know, how far away you are, how much interrupting landscaping there is between those, those areas. If you have a landscape buffer very close to you and a high building behind you, you see less of the building, fenestration on the building, color of the building, all those different things can combine to either, you know, lessen or exacerbate the visual impact of the structure and the surrounding walls around it.
You testified and commented on the proposed stormwater management wet pond, and the fact that it's along the frontage of the road between the building and Western Road, in an area where the ordinance would require a landscape buffer. So in your opinion, in the area where the basin wet pond, and for the public and the board, a wet pond just means it's a detention basin with water in the pond. So obviously, there's no plantings where the water is located. In your opinion, would that mean that this plan does not meet the buffer requirements?
I don't think it does in that area. I think the whole point of the buffer, the 20-foot buffer, is to create that vegetative bu, that, that distance, the separation between, and a visual barrier between the road frontage and the building. So what you're using is, the reason why you want to have these buffer requirements is to create a vegetative barrier, and then a larger setback of the building so that you're seeing less of the building through the buffer beyond the setback. And that's a zoning technique to reduce the impact, the visual impact of the larger structures on, on, on the road frontage. And so a lot of times, you'll see driveways that are non-perpendicular, that are angled, you know, offset in some way, or curved in some way, or set off at an angle so that you have vegetation in front and behind of the lane to still help create that buffer. When you have the wet pond there, you just have this break, and it's right in front of the structure. So it's, you're going to see the, the pond, and then the walls, and then the structure behind it at, at that section.
You, you testified either earlier this evening, or I forget if, maybe at the last meeting, about the route trucks would need to take. And we already talked about if a truck tried to go east, it's going on the it's going on the Kennedy Boulevard and going into downtown Manville Borough, which is on a route that Manville has petitioned the DOT to make a non-truck route. So trucks going west on Western Road to head towards 206. You mentioned they're going to be either on Sunnymead Road or Falcon Road. And there's a couple of intersections that they'll have to navigate. I know you're not a traffic engineer, but from a planner's standpoint, would it be good planning for the applicant to show geometry from survey data proving that the proposed trucks can navigate these intersections without impacting other vehicles at the intersections?
I agree, yes, they should. I think that's, the State Planning Commission is making that point that you need to study, you know, all the impacts of the traffic and the distances from the facility to the interstate system, the larger highway system. I think when, and we've all sat through these over, you know, these board hearings, either planning or zoning board hearings, where the traffic testimony focuses on level of service at the AM and PM peak hour. And it becomes this kind of rote report that we all review. And the solution's always, well, adjust the, we can adjust the intersection timing here to go from D to C, and we can adjust the intersection timing here from C to B. And, you know, it's, you know, background's got to turn this to D anyway, so we're not having any impact. But it doesn't take that next step and really look at all the impacts you and I have just been discussing in terms of the routes to the interstates, the impacts on the neighborhoods, the adequacy of the road itself, the shoulders, the breakdown lanes, impacts on pedestrian movements, on bicycle movements, on passenger traffic, on school buses, on routes to school. All those types of things are not included in this type of analysis. And because it's, you know, it was a planning board application for, you know, a use permitted in the zone per the applicant's application. And so you don't have that same level of review that, and you probably, a lot of times you don't get that level of review even with zoning board applications for a straight-up use variance.
Mr. Gleets, there was some testimony from some acoustical experts about sound levels and noise levels generated on-site. And there was mentioned by the applicant's consultants that in order to meet the ordinance's evening or nighttime levels, that there would have to be adjustments to operations in the evening, such as no backup signals on trucks or other operational adjustments. In your opinion, as a planner, is it good planning to impose the need to actually have active policing of a site in order for that site to meet ordinance's requirements?
I think anytime you're relying on zoning enforcement after a site plan approval, it's problematic. Because you have to then have, the burden is not on the applicant to create a design that works. The burden is on the township and the residences and the surrounding land uses to patrol and police, to complain, to generate complaints, staff time. And you have to have qualified staff time to go out there with certified meters or light meters, sound meters, all those other kinds of things. And it becomes this iterative process where you have to go back and forth. It's much better to have at the outset, a plan that meets all the standards. And so when you start to come up with, and some fixes are easier than others. You know, if you want to limit garbage pickup to after 9:00 AM, that's something that's relatively straightforward that can be, that can be, you know, put into a resolution and pretty much can, that's more common and less burdensome. But if you're going to have to have a trained sound person out there all hours of the day and night measuring intermittent and continuous sound, it's going to be a much harder prospect.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bernstein?
I'll reserve.
Okay. Okay, I think we're at a good point to take a brief recess. Mr. Bernstein, do we, and we discussed earlier, do we have?
We'll raise that issue when we get back from the break.
When we get back?
Yep.
Okay. So what does it say on the clock there?
8:23.
8:23.
All right.
8:23.
Four.
8:24, stand corrected. Yep, 8:24.
We will reconvene at 8:35 according to the clock. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Bernstein?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask for a 15-minute executive session around 9:45 this evening. I want to go over a matter that's recently come to our attention and I need to advise the board on, not regarding a specific application, but more an overall attorney-client privilege issue as to a litigation, which I'll elucidate at the time. So I would ask for the last 15 minutes for the executive session this evening.
Okay, does it require formal action?
And for purposes of the record, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Coys, when we noticed the annual meeting, we noticed an executive session may be conducted in any such meeting, correct?
Correct, Mr. Bernstein.
Thank you.
Okay. So just both sets of counselors, you know, we will be ending at 9:45 to go to executive. And, okay. So, Mr. Bernstein, you were reserving, so I'm going to. Members of the board, any questions?
I'll go first. So in your opinion, as a planner, when you have a zone or an area such that this site is nestled between an airport and railroad tracks and a community, what is the zoning that is there now? Is it appropriate or what zone would you think is, that that area should be?
I don't have an issue with the commercial zoning. And I think the, you know, because of the airport safety zone, you know, the fact that it wasn't made residential makes sense. You don't want that immediately adjacent to the airport. There's a reason for that. And I think there's no problem with necessary commercial zoning. I think the use adjacent, contractors, you know, construction, the earlier proposed nine-lot light industrial, you know, stuff, all the users you'd see in, you know, the Camplain Road and kind of area, that kind of stuff. Or if the warehouse use was reliant on the railroad, if they had a spur, you know, on to the railroad and 80 or 90% of the goods movement was on the railroad and precluded the use of trucks using Western Road, I think that would be appropriate too, as a condition, that you could use a warehouse there. But you had to have a railroad siding and you had to eliminate the need for the same type of truck movements you'd see on something that's a straightforward warehouse. So those are all different kind of options. You know, I didn't do a zoning report for the, you know, for changes, but I think those are the kind of things you could see there that would have less impact than the proposal, be appropriate for the adjacency of the railroad and the airport and have fewer impacts on the adjacent residential.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gleets. I have a question. You mentioned intensity of a site. How do you define intensity?
So in land use, there's a lot of different ways of measuring intensity.
That was going to be my next question. How do you define it and how do you measure it? So if it's combined, that's.
So it's, it's, in some ways, it's measured very straightforward residential density. You know, how many units per acre or floor area ratio? How much building per acre on the site? Lot coverage, impervious coverage are all measures of intensity on the site. But also generators of noise, traffic, dust, off-site impacts, impacts on adjacent properties is also a measure of intensity. So it's a general term and it's also a specific term in terms of certain measurements of use, whether it be residential, industrial, whether it's the physical improvements on the site or the off-track impacts. They all go into measuring intensity.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Cross or open? Okay. Counselor, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gleets, good evening.
Hello.
How many years have you been practicing as a professional planner?
About 20 years.
I would assume you've probably been before more than a few land use boards.
Correct.
Do you, who are you currently employed with?
My current employment was, my day job is with the Monmouth County Park System as their park planner. And I also have permission to work through my consulting firm as long as I do work outside of Monmouth County doing planning and zoning work. And I'm currently the township planner for Byram Township in Sussex County. So I handle all their planning work.
Do you generally represent applicants or objectors?
I've done both. I've done all three sides of the dais.
Have you appeared as an objector specifically for warehouse uses?
No, this is my first time.
About how many private developers' applications do you handle in a typical year?
In a year, I'll do maybe half a dozen.
And you're, I'm assuming you're being paid compensated for your planning services from the Hearthstone community?
Correct.
Are you aware that the only C-bulk variance identified by the prior board planner, or this board planner and our board planner, is that height variance?
Yes.
So this is an application, permitted use, arguably 1C variance. Isn't that correct?
I think I have made an argument about the use status, but yes.
And so just addressing the height, you've heard from both the engineer and more specifically our architect, that the building height is conforming but for that limited portion that contains the loading docks?
Yes.
And you understand that it's, there's a depression where the loading docks, where the ships pull up or the trucks pull up and that depression in grade accounts for that variance. Is that correct?
I heard the testimony.
Okay. And have you done any analysis on the facade facing the street or an average height analysis on the building?
I did not do a separate analysis on building height.
Do you agree that the loading dock faces that other industrial property?
Yes, it does.
Are you aware of any objection from the industrial property that faces the loading dock area?
I've not seen one presented before the board so far.
Would you agree that the front facade of the building is conforming to the 35 feet?
Per the township ordinance, yes.
It's actually under. You recall that testimony, it's actually under the maximum building height. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And you are aware that the prior township planner indicated that under the prior interpretation that this wouldn't be, this wouldn't require a height variance because the facade facing the street was under 35 feet?
I was not aware of that.
So you weren't aware that the town reinterpreted for the first time the definition of height for this application?
I was not at the first two hearings, but I read the transcripts and that sounds like one of the many items discussed in the first couple of hearings.
And you would agree that there's a densely vegetated area along the nor- northeasterly frontage of the property along Western Road?
Northeasterly, you're saying the adjacent to the construction?
Correct.
Yes, there is existing woods to remain.
Did you consider that vegetation in terms of visibility of the loading dock from Western Road?
I wasn't considering the visibility of the loading dock per se, but yeah.
Well, I'm just asking because that's the, that's the only variance we have, right? It's the loading dock area, so, okay. I noticed in your report that you don't have a bulk standards table of all the existing and proposed setbacks and other dimensional requirements in the I-2 zone?
Correct.
Are you aware of the front yard setback for this site?
I reviewed all the site plans. I reviewed the bulk standards. I didn't focus on the compliance, but I reviewed all the applications. I reviewed all the memos.
So as a professional planner, you didn't go over the bulk standards to see if the application was?
No, I did.
Compliant with the site plan?
I did.
Okay. And do you agree that Mr. Coys's planning memorandum indicating that the proposed uses are permitted principal uses in the light industrial zone? You disagree with that statement?
Yes, I disagree with that.
You aware that the minimum lot area in the zone is one acre? Where we're at 18.2 acres, about over 18 times?
Yes.
The lot size?
Yeah, that's, you can get a nine-lot, 10-lot subdivision out of the property.
And there's a minimum lot depth of 200 feet, but we're at 791.9 feet?
I trust your numbers.
Far in excess of the minimum standards for the zone?
Yes.
Minimum front yard is 50 feet, we're at 159.6. Do you have any reason to dispute that mathematics? Side yard of 25 feet, we're at 25.1 feet. Rear yard is 50 feet, we're at 173.3 feet. You talked about intensity previously and things that planners look at for intensity such as impervious coverage, building area density if it's residential, lot coverage. Are you aware that this application proposes maximum building impervious coverage far below the permitted standard in the I-zone?
Yes.
Okay. You talked about how this doesn't comply with some of the purposes in the land use zone, specifically light air and open space. And you indicated in your, in your report that 11 acres would be disturbed and I think nine, 8.5 acres of wooded area would be removed?
Yes.
So that leaves fairly significant amount of largely wooded vegetative portion of the lot that would remain undisturbed, approximately 7.2 acres?
Yes.
Okay. So when you look at intensity, I just, I am having a hard time reconciling why this, why you opine that this is, that this use is quote-unquote intense when this applicant meets the bulk standards by a multitude, sometimes a factor of eight or sometimes a factor of 18?
Yeah, I think my answer to the question was that intensity can be measured lots of different ways. And I think one of the ways it can be measured is off-track impact. Traffic, air, air pollution, noise impacts, those types of impacts. And I think this use as proposed, as compared to other uses that were either previously approved or would be permitted under the current zoning, would be less intense and have less impacts on the surrounding properties.
Yeah, and I, and I listened to your testimony right before we got here from last evening. And much of that testimony and in your report is related to your opinion that this use is inconsistent with the surrounding areas. But you don't address the fact that the use is a permitted principal use. How do you reconcile those two dichotomies?
I think my testimony so far has been pretty clear that when you, when you don't have a definition of a use in the land development ordinance, that there's just, there's the, you know, a lot of ways you have the common parlance definition of certain things. But in other ways, uses are defined in ordinances around the, around the state. Different municipalities have different definitions of different types of uses. And so I think when a use is defined in a land is defined in a land use code, it's very clear to everyone, the board, the applicant, the public, what is considered that type of use in that municipality. I think the absence of that, that definition, I think the board should consider the other factors in determining what that use is. And I think one of them is the intent, when you list those permitted uses, those permitted uses are supposed to support the intent of the zone. And so I did my analysis, review the, the intent of the zone, what it's designed to do, the type of uses it's supposed to create. And my analysis was when you look at all the other zones, the I one, and you look at all the other development in the I one, this is much larger and, and it has a much bigger scale than all the other uses so far. And so I think the board can consider the, what the intent of the drafters were in 1982, and then, you know, you and I disagree on the app, the applicability of the ordinance for 2023.
What about asking the planner if the use is permitted? Isn't that a more practical way of kind of discerning what uses are and are not permitted in any zone?
I think the fact that the system allows for the board to have a planner, the applicant to have a planner, and for objectors to have planners, to review and consider different aspects of the applications. And I, you know, I don't have any issue with other planners making other determinations. I looked at the situation and I did an analysis. And I think given the lack of definition, it allows us to take a further look into, into the use.
Do you think it was reasonable for the applicant who spent in excess of a million dollars in engineering, in deposits, and nine experts? Do you think it's reasonable for an applicant to rely upon a planner's determination that a use is permitted in his own?
The question requests evidence not in the record. I don't recall any evidence that your client has spent over a million dollars to get to this point, other than I think you've said it a couple of times on the record. That doesn't necessarily make it on the record. So I suggest you try another question.
Do you think that an applicant is justified in relying on a planner's determina- determination on a permitted principal use in a zone?
I'm going to object to that question. I think it requires illegal interpretation.
I think when you're going through a land development application process, there's a lot of input from different professionals, your own professionals, the board professionals. And yeah, it is reasonable to review those reports and make certain determinations. I also feel that we have a board hearing process and the public is allowed to participate in that board hearing process to present additional analysis. And so I think it's okay for many land use applications change, morph, are revised throughout this public process. So I think it's reasonable for reports to be updated, reports to change, and for the board to hear multiple of, multiple experts and witnesses.
As a planner, would you agree that potential uses and forms of improvement are dictated by the requirements of the bulk standards set forth in the land development ordinance?
Ask me that again. I'm trying to understand the question.
As a planner, would you agree that potential uses and forms of improvements on a given property are dictated by the requirements of the bulk standards as set forth in the land development ordinance?
I've seen it go two different ways. Some ordinances list a bunch of different uses with the same bulk standards. And it's unreasonable sometimes to apply those same bulk standards to all the permitted uses. And I think that's why we have this hearing process and that's why variances are often necessary, because different uses have different site requirements to make them function correctly. I also think, I've also seen other land use codes that subscribe different bulk standards for different uses within the zone. And those are more customly designed to create standards that are more aligned with the different types of uses. So I think it's, both approaches have their strengths and weaknesses. And I think sometimes when you're trying to apply one single set of bulk standards in a zone to a multitude of different types of development types and uses, they don't always work.
And I, I would agree with you and I, and I certainly understand that, you know, variance, relief and waiver relief is, you know, an inherent part of the land use process. But what I'm asking about is this application where we're, where we don't need that relief. Okay. Except for, again, except for the height of, height variance that was identified, which we disagree with. But does this applicant have a right to rely on the bulk standards in a, in a, in this application, in this particular application?
I think the applicant used the bulk standards to, to drive a lot of the design choices they made in designing the site.
But did the applicant have a right to rely on those rules?
I'm not understanding the, the terminology of right to rely. I don't know. That's not a
Was it reasonable?
It's not a term I use typically. Is there, I don't know, is there a legal definition of right to rely?
Was it, was it reasonable for the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You, you speak in your testimony and in your report, you know, that warehousing has changed over the years and this hadn't been looked at since the early 1980s. But how did, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand how that makes a permitted use a non-permitted use?
I think because the board has to look at the totality of the application. The board has to look at, you know, this isn't an AI that just looks at error. This isn't just a computer program or a rubber stamp. The board has to look at all of the testimony, all the applica-, all the application materials, comments from the public, to come up with what makes sense and what is, they're here to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the community. And they're here to review these site plan applications and to make, and to make informed decisions about what should be approved and what not, what should not be approved. And I think when you have certain uses, even if they're permitted, they don't make sense on certain sites, on certain roads, in certain contexts, and that the board has the responsibility to review all that in toto and not simply rely on, it checks these boxes and it's approved.
So you think a, a planning board or a zoning board of adjustment is there to determine whether uses are appropriate and not interpret the law?
Objection, that misinterprets the testimony.
Let me rephrase that. You said that, that a board is here to look at the health, safety and welfare. Isn't that the responsibility of the governing body who actually legislates the permitted and non-permitted uses?
And it's also up to this board to review individual applications to ensure that it meets those same standards and that those, the, the application as proposed is safe and will not have the kind of external impacts.
So, so you're saying that even if an applicant submitted a land use application that conformed to the uses and the bulk standards, that they could still turn it down because it was injurious to the health, safety and welfare of, of the community?
I think, I think there's case law that, you know, Piso Manton says, you know, no variance, no relief necessary. It's almost a, an automatic approval. But I think this board's here to review all the facts, look at all the situations and all the considerations and make a determination if this proposal makes sense on this piece of land.
So you don't think the role is to apply facts to the law, in this case, the land development ordinance, and render a decision on whether the application is consistent with the zone plan, the zoning standards, the uses?
I think there's certain facts absent before the board right now. I think a thorough review of the roads, the road network, the width of the roads, the shoulders on the roads, the complete truck routes. I think some of the environmental information is missing. I think some of the operational information is missing. And I think the board can consider all that when they review this application.
You alluded to Mr. Dean's testimony and in our traffic engineer about how, you know, essentially the, the use is permitted so that, that, that next level of analysis is not appropriate?
Yes.
Have you heard that in the past and other, other traffic engineers and planners testify to that?
I don't know if I've heard it put quite that same way. I think, you know, when the, like I said, most traffic engineers present that, you know, the level of service analysis and the impact A through F on the adjacent intersections and the peak hours and the traffic council, you know, they, there's this, the typical items found in a traffic report. And I think they don't always look at some of the, you know, and it's become kind of rote testimony. You, you punch, you punch the numbers in, you look up the ITE numbers, what the generation is, you go through the computer models and you do this, this analysis. But I, I don't think it answers some of these other questions that the public has and that the board should consider in terms of all these other impacts. And so I've heard that same basic testimony before a lot of boards. And I've also seen other applicants go through and do additional counts, expand to additional intersections and look at different routes and consider school bus schedules and consider other kind of schedules and shift work schedules and analyzing the, the impacts of their proposal.
Are you, do you have any concerns about the ingress and egress of the site? Truck or car traffic exiting or entering the site? Do you have any concern about that as a planner?
I have concerns about
I'm specifically asking about ingress and egress.
Ingress and egress. In terms of the, the actual geometry of the intersection or in terms of the, the number of turning movements to be made throughout the day. And then the, the
Safety concerns about ingress and egress?
I don't believe there's been enough information presented to really understand the full safety impacts of those turning movements throughout the day and how they're going to affect.
Wait, you, you just said that there is no off-site. You said, go ahead. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I don't believe there's been enough information provided to understand how many actual truck movements are going to occur in that intersection at that ingress and egress point and how that relates to traffic volumes throughout the day.
Are you aware of a long line of cases, specifically the latest case Duncan Donuts in New Jersey versus Township in North Brunswick, that again, addressed the issue of whether a planning board consider off, can consider off-site traffic when it relates to permitted uses?
I'm aware of that case.
Do what, and do you know, do you recall what the, what the court held in that case and others?
Yeah, that it's, the, the board can't consider, cannot consider those further off-track impacts.
In the beginning of your testimony, both in the February hearing and today, you, you started off by saying essentially that this is a, a non-permitted use, that quote, "The proposed use is more akin to a truck terminal and other uses specifically prohibited in LDO Section 18897(c)(1)"
Correct.
Okay. What are the other, other than the truck terminal, what are the other uses that are prohibited in LDO Section 18897(c)(1) that you, that you feel would prohibit the operations at this site?
Well, it lists motor freight terminals, motor and truck transfer stations, motor and truck depots, motor and truck storage sites, truck stops and truck repair facilities are all the different uses highlighted in that section as being prohibited.
And you quoted on page four of your report, the definition of the truck terminal, which I'll read, open quote, "truck terminal, unoriginating or terminating point for trucks, which may include service facilities for trucks and comfort facilities. The existence or proposed location of storage or warehouse of items transported by trucks shall not be deemed to change the character of the use which meets the foregoing definition of a truck terminal," close quote. Is that a correct recitation of your report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
What's the difference between warehousing, shipping and receiving completely within an enclosed building and a truck terminal?
I believe in a lot of ways, warehousing use is considered a part of a possible component of a truck terminal.
Is, is truck storage the principal use of this application?
No, I don't believe truck storage is one of the, I don't believe this aligns with the, the prohibition on motor and truck storage sites.
Is there a truck facility, repair facility proposed in this application, service facility?
No, again, I don't think that's the use that's, that's being prohibited.
Is there a comfort facility for truckers proposed as a principal use of this application?
The architect testified that there will be bathrooms available for the truck driver.
So, because there, there's bathrooms for a trucker? So this is a truck depot?
No, what I'm saying is that, you know, under the definition and under the prohibition on motor freight terminals, what you have here is, this is not a warehouse where you build the widgets, you store the widgets and then you ship out the widgets. What you have here is a facility that trucks go from the port to here with containers filled with finished products. The finished products are repackaged into new containers. Trucks pick up those containers and bring them back out for, for either to retailers or to, for further shipment.
Right.
And so those are the kind of elements, I think, that in terms of originating and terminating point for trucks, you have comfort facilities for the truck drivers, you have storage and warehousing of items transported by the trucks, all of which I think combined to be all elements of this motor freight terminal, this truck, this truck terminal that are exhibited by the user as proposed.
So it's your professional opinion that if a warehouse has a bathroom, that's a comfort facility for truckers?
I'm saying it's an element of, of the design and it's an element of the proposal. And it's an element of the definition.
Isn't every building required to have bathrooms?
I don't know if every building's required to have bathrooms. Most buildings do.
For warehousing, shipping and receiving, wouldn't it be reasonable to assume that trucks would be involved in that operation?
Yes.
Okay. If this was a truck terminal, why did the township find it necessary to prohibit warehousing, shipping and receiving within a closed building?
My testimony is that there's no definition of the warehousing, shipping and receiving in an enclosed building. But there is a definition for truck terminal. And the truck terminal definition has a lot of elements of what are being proposed. So I think you could interpret, you can either, you know, it's either a warehousing and shipping facility or it's a truck terminal. There's a lot of elements of both. And warehousing is included in that definition of truck terminal.
Why, you repeatedly reference the use of this application as a warehouse or a warehouse and distribution center instead of a truck terminal? Isn't that correct in your report? And then, in fact, you spend pages and much time talking about the State Planning Commission and the Office of Planning Advocacy, warehouse guidance. You even go so far as to say that this is, really could be a distribution facility such as a large fulfillment center, last mile fulfillment, HiCube. As we sit here today, with all your years of experience as a planner, is this a warehouse or is this a truck depot?
It's a warehouse.
Okay. You cited ordinance 2023, which is of course the enacting ordinance that bars warehousing. And in that, in your report, it says, quote, "The township of Helsberg experienced a high volume of warehouse applications due to the rise in e-commerce and consumer expectations for same-day delivery services perpetuating demand for large-scale warehousing for the storage and distribution of goods." Do you recall that?
Yes, those are all findings of the ordinance. One of the findings of the
And are, are you familiar with the time of application rule?
Yes.
Okay. And you And you're aware that this application was deemed complete well before the adoption of the enacting ordinance that bars warehousing?
Yes.
Okay. Have you ever, have you ever been an expert planner, either on the board side or the applicant side or an objector side where zoning changed during the pendency of a land use application?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, do you recall whether the existing zoning was applied to the application or whether the newly enacted zoning was applied to the application?
The only time I've dealt with the issue prior to this was under the old standard of the time of, time of decision.
Right, so back, I think it was before 2010.
Yes.
It was the time of application, right? Or I'm sorry, it was the time of decision. So could you explain to people who may not know what the difference was?
Yes, the original standard was that the township or a municipality would could go through the process of amending the zoning ordinance as to the uses permitted or the zone type or, you know, other elements of the land use ordinance. And they will be effective prior to the board having voted on the application. And I, I don't know if it was the publication of the opinion, but it was basically the time of the decision. I believe it was the, the, the vote of the board.
Right.
Whether it was the 45 days after or not, I think it was just the vote of the board.
And.
And then there was a change in the legislation that changed that rule to what's the current standard, which is time of application. And that has been determined, you know, through later clarification to be an application being deemed complete.
And are you familiar with Dunbar Homes v ZBA of Township of Franklin?
Um, no, I'm not, I'm not off the top of my head, I'm not.
Have you reviewed Cruvant v Township of Cedar Grove?
No.
How about D'Nizio versus Planning Board Town of Westfield?
I'm going to object again. Mr. Gleets is not an attorney, he is a planner. You can, you can answer if.
No, I'm not, I have not reviewed any of the cases.
Rook v Planning Board of Hamilton, are you familiar with that case?
No.
Okay. Can you cite a single reported or unreported decision in New Jersey or any jurisdiction that supports your opinion that this application is not subject to the time of application rule?
I'm going to, again, object that this is requiring a legal interpretation.
Again, I think you and, oh, and all three attorneys involved in the case have briefed on this. I made my review based on the, the plain letter reading of the law.
So the answer is no, you can't cite a case? Okay. Well, your report states as follows, quote, "The applicant should not be able to utilize the protections of NJSA 4055D 10.5 as it relates to this application and the proceedings before this board should stop and the application should be transferred to the zoning board for a D1 use variance." Do you recall that opinion in your?
Yes.
Okay. But you haven't reviewed the cases that interpret that.
The reading of the standard and the law and the reading of the ordinance and the fact that the ordinance goes through and recites several reasons why they're making this decision and a big portion of the, you know, the the, you know, one, two, three, the warehouses, the warehouses and then the fourth, you know, the, the fourth one, all state that it has to do with protecting public.
And I guess you haven't read the seminal case on this issue, 520 Victor Street Condo Association versus the Township of Saddle Brook Zoning Board of Adjustment?
Same objection.
Okay. How is a zoning ordinance that postdated the completeness determination relevant to this application?
I'm sorry, one more time?
How is the zoning ordinance that remove warehousing relevant to this application?
I think in two ways. One will be, you know, is the legal determination of the facts of this case as compared to the facts in the other cases you've cited and the interpretation of the ordinance. But I think in the other way, from a more general sense, from the planning sense, like I testified to you earlier, that the next time, you know, since 1982 until now, the analysis has gone from, you know, warehouses that were anticipated in 1982 and then looking at the current state of warehousing and given the advice of the State Planning Commission and, and, and having gone through other applications in the township, the determination was that they're no longer appropriate for these zones and that based on protecting the public health, safety and welfare of the community, that they should be prohibited. And then there was a further determination by this board that that determination was consistent with the master plan and should be recommended. So then the board recommended, you know, that it was consistent and it should be adopted without alteration. So that I think from, from that perspective, the board can consider those determinations when looking at this application. That's, that's my, that's my analysis.
I'm sure you've been part of many master plan reexaminations, right?
Yes.
Isn't it the, isn't the onus on the township to prohibit uses they don't want?
Yeah, through this, through the, either through the regular master plan process, land use plan amendment process, reexamination report process and everything else, the towns are required to review all the land use issues and make recommendations.
So if, if a municipality has a, has a land use code and certain uses are permitted and they get a flood of warehouse applications presumably from market pressures, don't you think that the board should uphold the law that's in effect when the application was filed?
I think it's the same answer I gave you before about, I think the board has responsibility to look at the application and the impact on the particular, particular piece of property and how it's going to impact.
Generally, isn't it the, isn't it the township committee that legislates these types of decisions? When you do a master plan reexamination or do you a rezoning or area in need of redevelopment, isn't that, isn't that a function, a legislative function under the police powers of the township committee or the borough council?
Yes.
Okay. Page one of your report said this application does not protect the health, safety and welfare of the residents of Hillsborough. Can you point to a specific fact or testimony that, that this application is injurious to the health, safety and welfare of the residents of Hillsborough?
I think the, the air quality impacts and the traffic impacts of the proposal and the lack of specific information about those can affect the public health, safety and welfare.
Okay. What specific air quality regulation would be violated if this application were approved?
I think we all sat through the air quality testimony, yes? And.
What regulation would be violated if this application was approved?
I don't believe one would be violated.
Okay. What traffic laws would be violated?
I don't think you can determine that until it's in operation.
What odor regulation or ordinance would be violated if this application were approved?
I don't believe the board, the township has an odor regulation.
Are there any other outside regulations that would be violated? Could you point to those outside agency regulations that would be violated if this application were approved?
No.
Page 10 and 11 of your report discusses traffic. And you indicated you made a couple of statements that Homestead Road, quote, "Doesn't even have a shoulder or very little shoulder for most of its length," close quote.
Where are we, where are we?
Traffic, 10 and 11?
Yeah.
Can you please indicate the width of Homestead Road?
I don't believe I discussed Homestead Road.
I'm sorry. Weston Road. Wrong, wrong client.
I don't have the dimensions. I've driven the road several times and noticed that there's no shoulders in most of the areas.
What's the width of the shoulder on Weston Road?
In some areas, there's two to three feet and some areas there's practically none, that the, the white line is at the edge of pavement.
You have measurements or this is just lay testimony?
Just me driving back and forth on Weston Road at different times.
How wide is a, an Amazon truck?
I don't have the dimensions.
How wide is a tractor trailer truck?
I don't have those dimensions.
How much more room does a tractor trailer need as opposed to an Amazon box truck?
I don't have an answer.
Okay. And your client, or you didn't rely on your own expert traffic report, is that correct?
Correct.
So there's been no, no objectors of traffic impact study completed?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then you talk about this quote unquote, "Difficult turn on the South Main Street." Did you prepare traffic turning radii for that intersection?
No.
Did you review lengths of tractor trucks, tractor trailers or any other dimensional analysis of that intersection?
No.
You didn't rely on any measurements or how about observations?
Yes.
Are you aware of that?
I've drove through the intersection several times and I watched traffic go through that intersection several times.
You're aware that trucks go through that intersection as we sit here today?
Yes.
Tens of thousands of trucks presumably? That's because you're not a traffic engineer, right? So why are you opining on, on traffic? Widths of roadways and difficult turns, wouldn't that be a net opinion?
Objection, that's asking another legal interpretation.
Okay. You talk about the idea that the, the objectors are concerned about the entirety of the traffic movements throughout the day and that the report is only quote unquote concerned about two hours?
Yes.
In your experience, I know you're very experienced, you've sat through a lot of hearings. Isn't your typical traffic impact study based upon peak flow?
Yes.
On pages 11 and 12 of your expert report, you discuss environmental impacts.
Yes.
Did your client retain any experts to rebut the environmental impact statement of Mr. Offenard?
No.
You've never been qualified as an expert in environmental, as an environmental professional?
No.
Okay. He reviewed the air quality expert report of Glenn Bodnar PE, who concluded that it's the position of this, of Bodnar Engineering that the slight additional vehicle traffic associated with the proposed Weston Road warehouse will have a negligible effect on local air quality, close quote. Do you recall that testimony?
I'm sorry, you're quoting my report or their testimony?
No, I'm quoting the air quality expert's report and testimony at the conclusion of his presentation.
I recall him testifying based on truck counts that weren't supported by the operational or, or traffic engineer.
My question was, you recall that Mr. Bodnar concluded that it would have a negligible effect on local air quality?
Yes.
Okay. What facts or air quality studies are you relying upon to present your opinion that nothing was, quote, open quote, "Nothing was presented to address the impact of increased truck, truck traffic," close quote?
The testimony as provided had very low truck traffic counts and the testimony of the traffic engineer had varying numbers of truck traffic counts and the operational expert had and the, the applicant's testimony all differed. There was no one single definitive answer as to the amount of truck traffic. And I believe the air quality report had two in, four out, like a very low number of trucks entering and exiting the site. And the board had some questions, the board's professionals had some questions about where those numbers came from.
But isn't that, isn't that typical where an operator will say, well, I got, you know, I got, I have a deli, I have two trucks in the morning on Tuesday, Thursday, and then you have a traffic engineer who says, according to ITE data, we look at this, we look at that, typical uses, we have actual measurements. Isn't it typical that it wouldn't consist, you know, necessarily be exactly consistent? Because one is a, an expert opinion based upon data and one is an operational or potential operational testimony?
No, I think, I think in fact, there, there shouldn't be a lot of difference between those. I believe the operator in there, the applicant and the operator have, should have a clear understanding of what their operations are going to be and present that to the board. And I think there, there was a very, there's a big lack of specificity. And I think when you look at these traffic generations that you see in these reports, they're based on these reported standards from all over the country, from all other situations, all different kinds of situations. And so I think you have to combine those two together to come up with a clearer picture of what the operator's proposing and what the operator is expecting and what general industry standards are, so you have a better understanding of what's going to go on in that site.
I agree with you, but you just critiqued the fact that there was inconsistencies for, for truck trip counts. And then you just said, well, really, you got to look at the data, you got to look at national trends. It's not, right? Isn't, isn't that typical that a, a traffic engineer looks at IT data and real, real life counts and then puts it in a report? And that may be inconsistent from an operator's testimony on what his anticipated or current operations are?
We're talking about the air quality report. Right now you're questioning me on the air quality report and those were different numbers. Those were numbers that were given to him long before there was changes and long before the traffic report was, was proposed, I believe.
Can you cite any facts or conclusions or data that disputes our expert?
I don't have an independent report.
Okay. So it's another net opinion, right?
Objection.
Prior to 2000, prior to 2023-08, and I think you indicated this earlier, that the township never amended the zoning ordinance or regarding warehouse uses since 1982?
Those appear so.
Okay. Do you know how many master plan documents have been adopted since 1981 in Hillsborough?
Uh, well, there was the, there was the main master plan that was done, let me check. There was a 2005 master plan, a 2008 reexam and a 2018 reexam. That's what my research is.
Okay, well, would it surprise you that there's been 16 master plan amendments since 1982?
I don't believe they were universal. I believe they may have been specific land use.
Does not include housing elements, historic preservation, farmland elements? Did you review all the master plan reexaminations and, and master plan amendments from 1982 through 2023?
I reviewed the '05, the '08 and the '18.
How often is a master plan reexamination report required under the municipal land use law?
10 years.
And what, talk about what that is. What is a master, what are the elements of the, of the reexamination report?
There's five main elements. There's the review of the land use concerns at the previous report or the previous master plan. There's changes to the assumptions surrounding those. There's recommendations to address those changes. There's a statement on any redevelopment plans that have come into effect. I think I'm missing one. But that's, those, that's the key, those are the key features of the, the master plan reexamination.
You indicated you did review some of the reexamination reports.
Yes.
Four, there's been four and you. Four, there's been four, and you indicated the 2018 that you did review, correct? Are you aware of any specific language in any of the township's master plan documentation regarding issues or discussions about warehouse uses?
No, the only, like, as I mentioned before in my testimony, I believe the feeling relevant was the fact that there was a recommendation to consolidate the light industrials into smaller numbers.
If, you know, you testified earlier that the nature of the warehousing business has changed drastically since the 1980s. If this was such a historic problem for Hillsborough, wouldn't you expect that those issues would be at least discussed in a master plan reexamination?
It all depends on what the issues are at the time. And I don't know how many applications there were before the board in 2018. But there was a whole bunch that occurred post-2020. I don't even know the total number of applications before the board. There was enough, though, that the town council took action.
Well, I guess that's my point. I mean, how can you conclude that the warehouse use substantially, substantially impacts you know, the intent and purpose of the master zone plan? The master zone plan reexaminations, amendments, never even discuss warehousing. In fact, it's permitted.
It's like, it's like trying to prove the negative. So
So you
just, just because in 2008 it wasn't an issue, or 2012, or even 2018 it wasn't an issue, it's been an issue now.
When, when did the warehousing boom start in New Jersey?
I think there was significant development prior to COVID, so 2018 through 2020. And then there was a kind of stop on everything. And then post-COVID, there's been a second resurgence post-COVID, and actually slowing down now.
That's all I have. Thank you, Paul.
Bernstein? Open? Open and public? Yes.
I do have a few questions too, but of course I'll defer.
Mr. Sinkovich gets to go next.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have 11 minutes?
Yep. We'll be done in 11 minutes. As a professional planner, would it be fair to say that you deal with context a lot and interpretation?
Yes.
And there was testimony a few moments ago, and I'm not going to directly quote it because I didn't write it down, but Mr. Bernstein asked you if this was a warehouse and you said, "Yes."
Mr. O'Grady.
I mean, I'm sorry. Mr. O'Grady did.
Yes.
I throw my voice a lot, but not.
I apologize. Could you expand upon that for me? I, I think we've discussed it before, but, you know, is a warehouse a warehouse, or do you have to look into the intent and purpose of the zone and?
I think that's been the whole, you know, a big focus of my testimony is that when you have terms that are undefined, they there is a certain amount of interpretation into those. And so local ordinances do their best to define some of these, these issues. And I think you have to, when they're not defined, like I said before, you had to look to the intent of the zone and the zone plan and what was anticipated to be developed under this, these uses as contemplated back then. And again, you know, even in the own, in the local definitions here in Hillsborough, you know, you, there's a distinct, in Hillsborough, an adult daycare center is different than an elder care center. Even their own planner's testimony was that building height's different here than in other places. So there's a term, building height, and then there's how Hillsborough defines what building height is. You guys determined that there's a different definition between service station and vehicle service facilities. Sheds in Hillsborough are less than 200 square feet. If they're more than 200 square feet, they're something else. They're not a shed. Critical areas, you said slopes of 12% are more critical. Other towns, it's 10, other towns, it's 20. So town by town, circumstance by circumstance, local municipal land use ordinances make definitions of what they're interpreting for that town, what these things are. And that's why I've gone through the additional analysis.
Do you believe there could be a situation in which a warehouse is also a truck terminal?
I believe the term warehouse is embedded in, that the whole concept of warehousing is embedded in the definition of truck terminal.
Mr. O'Grady asked you a lot of questions about truck sizes and shoulder widths and what's bigger, an Amazon truck or a tractor trailer? Wouldn't you agree with me that part of the reason why you didn't have answers to those questions because that information wasn't presented to the board?
It's a combination of, of some of the information wasn't presented. And I don't have, off the top of my head, I don't know. You know, I think it's 22 feet, but I don't know. I don't, you know, on the top of my head, I don't have an answer that, that a traffic engineer might have in terms of when they run their models of wheel lengths and wheel bases and everything else. Axle width, you know, I don't have that information in my brain.
Right. And part of the reason why you don't have this because it wasn't provided to the board in this application, isn't that correct?
That's part of it. And even if I'd read it, I may not recall it. You know?
Can you just briefly explain why you discussed traffic and environmental and the air report and the noise report in your testimony?
Because the issue has become so prescient in New Jersey that the State Planning Commission decided to put out a report, a very unique report that they typically don't, you know, there's no annual report from them. There's no report on, from the State Planning Commission on other types of commercial uses. This is a pretty singular type of report. And those are the exact types of things they said are an issue and should be considered when you're going through these issues. When you're considering these uses for local approval. These are the very type of things that, you know, in aggregate, these are problems and you need to review them when you review these applications.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Just, just one more. Would you agree that an expert opinion in any field should be based upon a reasonable degree of scientific, technical, or specialized knowledge?
Yeah.
Okay. Nothing further.
Sure, join in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had two questions that came to mind. It was discussed that balkan area criteria may have some indication of the type of appropriate use on site and that maybe the board should rely on the ordinance. And I don't know if you've looked at the criteria for this site, but as I understand it, the required amount of parking for this site is 43 spaces. Does that sound appropriate?
My review of the ordinance was that, yeah, they have more parking than, than is required by the ordinance.
Well, would it, would it surprise you that they're proposing 99 spaces, so over double the amount of parking?
No, I think that's part of my analysis, was that they have twice as much parking as they needed.
And I believe, according to the site plan prepared by Van Cleef, they're calculating the required loading docks for the spaces for this site would be five. Does that sound?
Yes.
And if I remember correctly, the plan is showing 20 loading.
Yes.
So that's four times the ordinance. And I believe the ordinance doesn't require any trailer storage, but on the site plan, I believe there's 28 trailer storage spaces. Is that correct? So in your opinion, as a planner, would what's proposed be significantly different than what the balkan area criteria would specify or require for this site?
Yeah, I think that was part of my analysis, was that this is certain aspects of the, of the development are kind of overt. You know, there's more parking, more loading, more than is required, and so it can, you know, lead to expanded use. And I also think that, you know, the bulk standards, you know, there's a certain lack of specificity when you have a single set of bulk standards for multiple uses.
Would you say, you know, from a planning standpoint, the balk standards anticipated a certain intensity of use? Hence the five space loading dock spaces and the 43 parking? And yet, the use proposed here is far more intensive by the pure fact that so many more spaces are proposed?
Correct.
I want to touch on one other topic, and that is the idea of a certain use having a certain operation associated with that. In your, in your experience as a planner, would you say that other types of uses over time change? And I'll give you one example, maybe to help jog your memory, like restaurant or a fast food restaurant. You know, over time, I think what we anticipate the site plan needs of a fast food restaurant for many have changed. Would you agree in your, in your opinion? And I'll give you one example, maybe to help, is drive-throughs. I mean, I think if you go back long enough, there are many fast food restaurants didn't have a drive-through. And we designed site plans and zoning was set up to handle that. If the zoning doesn't change and keep up with the industry, could you have a situation where a restaurant was proposed supposedly as an approved use in a commercial zone? But because of the drive-through that's proposed, you end up with a potentially unsafe situation where cars are backing up onto the frontage road and creating an unsafe situation trying to utilize the drive-through?
It happens all the time.
And would that be a situation where even though the use fast food or restaurant is in the ordinance as approved for that district or that zone, this is a situation, but maybe it's not appropriate for that site?
That's the whole purpose of the planning board. To look at the application in total, to look at the impacts of the application on the surrounding properties, the, the surrounding road network, everything else. And, and then look at both how the existing code treats that and what can happen through overtime and through changes. And so pharmacies never had drive-throughs and coffee shops didn't have drive-throughs. And now we see that all over the place. And we see, and, you know, there's plenty of time where a five-car queue would seem excessive. Now you need 18, 20-car queues to be appropriate.
And would you agree many municipalities are catching up to the industry and then revising their ordinance?
The towns are typically.
For those operational needs.
The towns are typically behind because the industry comes up with innovations and then the towns have to respond to the innovations and they have to then update their codes.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, perfect. We only have a minute left.
Can I ask one more question?
You got 60 seconds.
Mr. Gleets, I just wanted to confirm that the opinions you rendered today were within a reasonable degree of professional planning certainty?
Planning certainty?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I review this as a professional planner. I use my 20 years of experience as a professional planner reviewing site plan applications across the state and providing both testimony and review for, for boards and evaluating the proposal.
Thank you.
Okay.
You want to try one last time?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, before we go pass the motion to go into executive session, let's talk about the next hearing. A look at the board calendar would indicate, assuming Mr. O'Grady's client willing to extend the time of decision, would be June the 6th. What was that, Mr. Leponty?
Is that, we also have to make sure, is there other witnesses are available on that date?
Well, that's why I'm proposing and waiting. I need Mr. O'Grady for a piece of it. I need these gentlemen for the other piece.
Well, a couple of things. We filed this application 779 days ago.
And it's not going to get any less shorter.
Mr. Ash had one child. My child, I think, was in kindergarten and is going to be in fourth grade. And no, not a cool mustache back then.
And I wasn't medicare eligible at the time either. But that's beside the point.
I am certainly amenable to extending the time of decision. Okay. But Mr. Emerson, we should not be working around Mr. Emerson's schedule.
We're not working around Mr. Emerson.
He wasn't available.
We're working around the board's availability, not Mr. Emerson's. I have no idea when Mr. Emerson is available. I'm assuming in about a minute, we're going to find out. Depending on what else occurs in the next minute as to our lives.
I do have his availability going forward through
Is he available, is he available the 6th, Mr. Ash?
The 6th of June?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Emerson tells me she plans the vehicles going for the Homestead.
Well, that's, that, by the way, isn't scheduled yet, so I'm happy he knows something we don't know. He's anticipating, but we're offering it up for Mr. O'Grady and his client on the 6th of June.
Yeah, that would be, we are amenable to that. And I also emailed you today, 279 Homestead.
Yes, I see.
It's going to be pushed, so that's another night.
We are, we are holding that date for other applications, which may include one or more of yours. So with that time of decision extension to June 30th, Mr. O'Grady, I'm not going to be.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question? I'm assuming Mr. Gleets has to come back for the public? Thank you.
And miss the fun of everybody in the audience who might want to crack at him?
He's going to check his calendar too. I'm hoping it's fine. This one should be short.
So motion to continue this application, Mr. Chairman, to Thursday, June 6th, 2024. At 7:00 PM or as soon as thereafter as the matter may be heard without further notice. And an extension for time to June 30th, 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Leponty?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Chigari?
Yes.
Here's Ron.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'd like to ask for an executive session with the governing, with the board under the provisions of 10:412B7 Attorney Client Privilege to discuss an opinion recently rendered in the Dimming Chip Realty versus Township of Sparta Planning Board case as it relates to various applications before this board. It should take no more than 15 minutes, and I don't believe we're going to need to take formal action, but we will need to come out of executive to close the meeting. So I would propose we go in the back room if the public wants to stick around and wait for the.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
For the reasons stated on the record.
For the reasons stated.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Who's the motion?
Ronnie.
Mr. Vanderly? Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Debb?
Yes.
Chairman Leponty?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor Chigari?
Yes.
Here's Ron.
Yes, we'll see everyone in about 15 minutes. Okay, we're back out of executive session.
At 10:10, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for a motion to come out of executive session.
May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that all members of the planning board present during, at the commencement of the executive session and present the recommencement of the open session, as well as the board attorney, the board planner, planner slash township planning director, the board engineer, and the board stenographer, as well as videographer. The board went into executive session to receive legal advice from the board attorney regarding a recent case involving Dimming Chip Realty and Sparta Planning Board as to the overall issue of board involvement and the interaction of board involvement with social media, especially in light of our ongoing controversial applications. The board was given advice. I responded to questions asked of me seeking advice. No formal action needs to be taken at this time, Mr. Chairman. The appropriate motion is a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Just a reminder, we do have a meeting next week. On the 11th.
And I remind you all, we have not one, not two, but three applications. And they, we are basically going to hold them in one hour increments, folksies. Don't be late. We're going to start at 7:00 and we're going to end at 10:00. going to start at seven, and we're going to end at 10, and they're all going to end up getting carried.
Okay, with those courage, words of encouragement, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, see you next week.